Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, July 10 Committee of the Whole Meeting. We're beginning right at six o'clock. And at this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councillors for tonight's meeting? Seeing and hearing none, anything from Lead Services or Admin?
Nothing from Administration tonight, Your Worship.
Thank you. So I'm looking to confirm. Mr. Brown, you had wanted to speak at tonight's meeting. We have pretty strong rules and policies that you could speak if it was an agenda item, and we don't have the agenda item for Garage Suites, so you wouldn't be able to speak tonight. But I believe our Lead Services person, Jonathan, is willing to meet with you. I know, I understand you want to do, or you're working on a petition. He'll give you a lot of help and guidance as far as how the petitions need to be done as per Alberta legislation. But thank you. You're welcome. All right. So I'm looking to confirm the agenda as amended. All in favor? Did we do that? Did I have a flaw? Oh, sorry. I've had a little flashback there. Okay. Councillor Wagner?
I move that council adopt the July 10, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion is carried. We move now to delegations. 3.1, Epcore Utilities. Good evening and welcome. We look forward to seeing your presentation. I read through it today. It was very interesting.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity we have to come and speak to you. My manager, Kevin, sends his regrets. He's traveling today and wasn't able to make it on time. But I do want to thank you on his behalf as well. Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Okay. So we have, you know, an eight-year contract with the town of Strathmore to operate and maintain the water and wastewater systems within the town. Within that contract, we have a four-year kind of requirement to come and give you a presentation and tell you how we did for the first four years. And I want to just go through that quickly. I won't take too much of your time. I know you're very busy, so. So it's just a performance review from the first four years. So in the contract, we have these performance standards that we're required to meet. There's 10. Initially, there was 10 key performance indicators that we were tracking. Couple of years in, we added a few more with an amendment with the town. So the first five are cumulative, 25% per year for each of those items over the four year span. So we cover those first five 100% in the first four years. Does anybody else get a sore neck from doing this? It's looking up at the screen at the same time.
We've gotten used to it.
Yeah, the next six to 10 are annual requirements, so we have to do 100% or meet all those requirements within that one-year period for each of those KPIs. So those are related to customer service, capital planning, safety and quality and those types of things. So we track each of those KPIs throughout the year. We do a monthly meeting with the town, with Ethan and Colleen, and we just kind of go through the monthly report and where we are sitting with our capital items is where we're sitting with the other KPIs. So as you can see on the screen, so catch basin and CCTV work are not. You'll see one that's got 75%. The CCTV work quite 100%. And then the storm manhole inspections was at 50%, so, or just over 50%. So those ones were the ones that we added on later on, the catch basin inspections and the storm manhole inspections. And then CCTV work is something that we do that's not required, but we do it because when we do the sewer line cleaning, we want to inspect it and make sure that the work that we did is actually meeting its goal. And then the UDF, which is Unidirectional Flushing, we postponed that last year because of the drought conditions. And then this year, we also, sorry, water restrictions last year. This year, because of the impending drought that they're announcing, we reduced it to just the trouble spots that we have within town. So those are things like cul-de-sacs or where we might have a dead end and the water will sit in the pipeline for long periods of time. So we do want to flush those, make sure that that water is clean and clear for the residents. KPI 6 is operator callouts. So we have a requirement to, every time we get called, we have to respond within 60 minutes. Our internal requirement is 30 minutes with my staff, making sure that they meet that, you know. And we've had one in the 269 callouts in the last four years where we didn't meet that. And that was, if I'm not mistaken, it was a operator switch over and then the new operator forgot to change the phone, so that would go to him. So we've since automated that, so it wouldn't happen again. Those are water quality issues or quantity issues. So somebody might call and say, I've got dirty water, or somebody might call and say that they don't have any water. So we'll respond to those. Sewer backups, frozen water services, fire calls, those types of things. KPI 7 is stakeholder engagement. So this is us going out in the community and doing stuff with, either with the town or individually. And those are things like tree planting, the pancake breakfast, which we've done pretty much every year since I've been here, and one of our staff favorites. Did a little work at the Wheatland Crisis Society, attended the powwow and sponsored the powwow here in town the last couple of years, Culture Days, and then, yeah. So we have a good staff that likes to volunteer for those things, so it's really nice. Capital Projects is KPI number eight. So as you can see on the list there, pretty much across the board, we came in under budget on all those things. Some of it is, there was some difficulty with COVID, with the pricing going through the roof, as you know, and some difficulty in finding parts and pieces, equipment for the capital projects. So some of those were, you know, we overestimated based on those factors, and sometimes we just couldn't get the parts in order to complete the work and change course midway through in order to get some other work done. KPI nine is safety. So we, obviously, we strive to have no incidents, no lost time injuries every day. Today, we celebrated 1,000 days with, since the last time that we had a recordable injury. Prior to that, we had one in 2021 and one just a few months before that in 2020. But before that, we went five years, over five years with a recordable incident. So we're trying to get to that five years again and beyond. But the one in 2020 was very minor. Somebody got cut with glass on putting glassware in the dishwasher in our lab, a couple of stitches. And the second one was a bit more involved, had an operator with a sore back for a week, so he was out of commission. And then all of our team members are required to meet 95% of their safety training. So we have a training matrix that we follow, you know, every month to make sure that they're getting all the training that they need and make sure that they're safe when they're doing their job. Approval compliance. So this is the wastewater treatment plant that has an approval for what we can discharge out to the Bow River. And we've been 100% on all that in the last four years. In fact, we've been all that 100% since I've been here six years ago, so. Utility locates was one that was added as well. Wasn't something that we did prior to this first four-year term. And you can see there that we get an influx of them every, you know, summertime when builders and other people are working. We did about 4,200 locates in the last four years, about 1,000 per year. And that works out to about, you know, one person over the last four years of time. This is our team. So the fellow on the right is not really injured. He's just going through safety training. But we have a very close-knit group of people. We've had a lot of people here for a long period of time. The two newest employees are five years in, so we've got some people that are up to 18 years. And you can see there, Jenny's, she was the one on the front screen. She's been, she's been here 18 years. She's worked for Epcore the whole time. And Cam's been here almost as long, 17 years. You see the two at the bottom. Derek, Eric, sorry, is actually going back to school after this month, so he's given his notice, but he wants to become an engineer and he's going to go back and do that. So good for him. So next four years, this is kind of our focus. Early on, just continue to exceed those KPIs. We want to make sure that we meet all those requirements, make sure that the system is maintained and that you have, you know, a reliable system throughout that term. Continue to build on our successes and improve where we can. Some of the things that we've done early on was, that are having an effect now, is last year, we changed the sludge blending so that we could increase our capacity, also reduces the amount of time that we need to spend on de-watering, reduces chemical use, sludge hauling, power, all those things. So we just started really seeing that change come into effect now. And then that polymer change we made as well, just early this year, we reduced our Q1 chemical invoice by 30%. So that's one of our larger line items on our budget is chemicals, so it's good to see that reduction. Again, I mentioned earlier, just get a second five-year span on time without a recordable injury. We have a really good safety culture and everyone buys in. We have, you know, a lot of training, a lot of, you know, safety meetings, and we do a lot of near-miss reporting and hazard identification, and we investigate every injury across all of Epcore's Southern Alberta region. And we talk, you know, through a lot of these every month, just what things went wrong, where we can improve our performance by listening to what others have done and changed. Strong focus on customer service and community outreach. I mean, it's my goal that everybody in Epcore represents the town and Epcore here in Strathmore and that, you know, that we should have a good reputation, that we should be known as a reliable contractor and that we do the job that we're paid to do. And then try to retain the best we can, the amazing staff that we have. So we have replaced Eric with one of our summer students this year, Corey. He'll be joining us full-time permanent once Eric has moved on, so. Yeah, so that's it. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. You answered the one question I was going to have about the storm, the stormwater, the manholes inspection, so that's perfect. I wanted to congratulate, thank you, congratulate you on your safety record and very impressed with your community outreach too as well. So thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing and hearing none, thank you very much. Good seeing you again.
Thank you. You as well.
Take care. We move now to item four, Confirmation of Minutes. 4.1, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for June 12, 2024. Oh, I'm so trained. Councillor Langmead.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move that council adopt the June 12, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented in Attachment 1.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We move now to five. Business 5.1, Background Report, 2024 Municipal Development Plan Review, which is on page Good evening, Glenn. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Fuel, committee and the public. I want to start by thanking all of you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the town's municipal development plan review. I want to use this time to provide the committee and the public with a brief summary of the plan review that we'll be undertaking and how we got to this spot today, and of course, where we're going to be going with this next. So the goal today for us is to garner some feedback from the committee and the public and to start thinking about the MDP review and what it's going to mean as we move forward together as a town that is anticipated to grow and develop to a population of around 35,000 people in the next 25 to 30 years possibly. And while it doesn't have to be today, if anyone thinks of anything later on, I'm always willing and happy to talk about the town's MDP review. I can spend time answering questions and taking comments at any time. So to jump in, the background in short here is that municipalities in Alberta are all required to have a municipal development plan. And taking a broader look at this, land use planning in Alberta takes us to what we would call the planning hierarchy, which most commonly is depicted as an upside-down pyramid that's on the screen, and it's describing the level of detail that's involved with each type of planning that we engage in here in Alberta and then more specifically as you move down the pyramid in the town of Strathmore. So this hierarchy is of provincial legislative and policy documents, and they're implemented by decision-makers, which includes provincial departments and agencies, regional boards and agencies, as well as municipal governments. And for us in Strathmore, we're currently working on our interior municipal development plan with Wheatland County, and we're also working and beginning to work on reviewing our municipal development plan. And from here, you can see that items like area structure plans, land use bylaws, subdivision plans and so on, they all are informed by the higher order, IDP and MDP, as well as the provincial legislation, like for example, the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan. So the good news, I think, here is that Strathmore does already have an MDP, and it's not necessarily bad news at all, but ours does date back to 2014. And actually, there was an MDP 2014 review that was launched back in 2019, 2020. That was, that would be in keeping with municipal best practices. However, that was paused due to the COVID-19 global pandemic. But I am bringing some good news to the committee here tonight, because I'll say that most likely there is a silver lining here, because this pause has let us look around a bit. And what we've found is that good things kept happening despite that pause. The town's strategic plan and council's priorities have come online. There's been a number of large development projects that have got off the ground, either in or near Strathmore. And then all things considered, we've got a great team that's assembled, and when you pair that with that silver lining, I think that we're in a good place to relaunch the MDP review in 2024. So some expected highlights around the project, and this is very high level, but basically, MDP 2014 would be replaced by MDP 2024. And you can call this modernization. We can call it an update to the plan that responds to council's strategic priorities that are now in the strategic plan. We can also call it a response to what's currently swirling around in the land use planning world or circles in terms of what's important as far as matters and issues go. But ultimately, it's an update to a plan that's been in effect since 2014. We also want this to be a living document that we'll adaptively manage on the go. So staying current and out in front is key in all of this for us. And if we want to grow and develop in a way that represents good land use planning, we'll need to be out in front. And I think more importantly, we want this to be the town's paramount or guiding policy document. So MDP 2024 will be designed with accessibility and usability in mind for everyone, not just the planners. And of course, we want to establish linkages to other town documents and studies. So there are some examples there on the screen. The town has recently, has done recent work on the Economic Development Action Plan. We have master servicing studies. We have a Recreation and Culture Master Plan. The idea is that the MDP can and should be the town's most important document, and it should help inform and guide and help out with those other items. Some key project objectives, I think really we're looking at what I would say is three plus one project objectives. The first is we need to align MDP 2024 with provincial legislation. And I'm talking about provincial legislation under the Municipal Government Act and all the related and applicable regulations. They're applicable in 2024, not 2014. Secondly, we're going to want to review and align MDP 2024 with other existing plans and studies that have come online or been approved by council since 2014. And of course, in order to do this, we do need to engage in further meaningful public consultation with all stakeholders to help guide that process. On the right side of the screen, and this is some good news to share with the committee this evening, we did reach out to the International Association for Public Participation, and we've received, we've received permission to use their copyright materials, which is an industry standard for use in our own public engagement strategy. So what is off to the right, it is hard to read, but it is their spectrum of public participation. So you'll see this model used elsewhere. It's been done, it's been used successfully, and it can be quite innovative in the ways that you can use it. And so for us, I think that's a big win, and we've received that permission to use that material in our own MDP review when it comes to public engagement. And then I think the plus, the plus one in all of this, at the bottom there, it says being the best planning administrators. I think we want to continue getting better at administering the planning process in Strathmore, and the MDP review is a great way to make some headway on that. So an MDP can do lots of things, and the Municipal Government Act in that regard is prescriptive in some areas, but there's also some built-in flexibility in other areas. The report that the committee has in front of them outlines this in the Policy Implications section, so I won't go into too much detail there, but there is some flexibility around how we can build the town's MDP. So for us in Strathmore, the approach that we've taken is to consider the six priority areas that council's identified in the strategic plan as being pillars that can directly inform and feed into MDP policies that are intended to direct the town's future growth and development. So the table here that we have on this slide, I would stress, are just some examples of how you can make connections between those strategic priorities and how some MDP policies may come into the mix. Just a quick example would be, for instance, affordable living. We can, we can look at improving housing mix. Some accessory dwelling unit work's already been done. There's also what's called missing middle housing. Affordable living isn't just housing as well. You can look at policies that are supportive of small businesses. So quickly, what are we doing now? We are working on and finalizing a draft MDP. So there was enough background research that was done previously, and there was public engagement that was done previously, prior to the pause. So staff is in a position to work on and finalize a draft MDP. And once the project is fully launched, that's what we'll mainly be focusing on, and we are at the same time building a public engagement strategy that will help engage the public and get some feedback on that draft MDP when it's ready to be released. And of course, we're also here today to get some initial feedback and perhaps some discussion from members of council. We want to make sure that we're involving each of you in a way that you're comfortable with. For instance, we're prepared and we're thinking that a minimum of two workshops with council to explore key issues and concepts would be warranted as we resume the project. Finally, we've been working with the town's communication team on the preparation and launch of Over2U Project Portal website, which should be ready for launch soon. The Project Portal is a model that we've opted for, that once live, it'll be a central location for ongoing engagement and a place where the project sort of lives and grows in front of your eyes. And we're looking at innovative ways that we can use that format that other municipalities have used, and even if we're able to go beyond it in creative ways to engage in, to get And of course, what's up next? We are, as I mentioned, in a position soon to release the draft MDP to the public. At that point, that's when we would launch and complete public engagement on the draft MDP, and then we would also come back for sort of a second round of engagement following consultation on the first draft. We would make revisions, and then there'd sort of be a final and adoption stage that would involve public engagement as well. So when you would really be hearing from staff next at this point would be an interim report. Lots of municipalities call this what we heard. So if the draft MDP has been released to the public and we've engaged in, we've engaged the public and we've got feedback, and we've looked at that feedback, we would report to committee of the whole or to council on what we heard, and it would help direct some changes and revisions to that draft MDP. So it would be a nice sort of art break in the project for council to get some feedback on how all of that is going before proceeding to adoption and finalizing the plan. And there would be a public hearing for the final plan, so this would be occurring before So beginning to wrap up here, I just wanted to share with the committee, the MDP project team. We have Chuck Proctor. He's the manager of Development Services. I am Glenn Ferguson, and the project manager, lead, and also the senior planner here at the town of Strathmore. We have Kate Bacon, one of our planners, Catherine Cortez, our administrative assistant. And also critical to the core team, we do have a planning consultant that's available to us should we need it. We also have our own internal agencies and departments as partners in what we would call the core team. We have external agencies and departments as well. And then, of course, we have the public and project stakeholders. So I'll say something that's very planner-like, but the last point there is really important to consider the public and stakeholders as part of sort of the critical or core team in all of this. So to close, again, thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We do want questions. We do want comments. We're also wanting to hear concerns, any ideas as well. I mentioned that there would be workshop opportunities. It doesn't, of course, need to be here on the spot. I had mentioned earlier in presentation that I'm always happy to talk about planning, and especially in this case, the MDP review. So my contact information is there on the screen, and also I'd be happy to answer any questions or have any discussion tonight. So that does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Thank you very much for your presentation. I have one question about, maybe you can help me understand better, and then maybe some of the councillors or people at home. How does the MDP tie into area structure plans that have been sitting dormant for long periods of time? I'm thinking of one in our northeast that's been 14, 15 years and there's been no movement. How does that new MDP document that you guys are working on tie into those areas?
Sure. That's a really good question. I think the MDP review offers an opportunity to actually review those area structure plans as well. There may be some policy directions that end up being built into the 2024 MDP. I don't know or can't say if we would be going as far as saying that there'd be mandatory reviews of those area structure plans, but I think the project in itself, as you're modernizing the MDP, is going to offer the opportunity to revisit those plans. And hopefully, we can have some of those developers or builders or owners of those lands at the table, and hopefully, they would adapt some of those ASPs to the modernized MDP. So I think it's an opportunity, in short, to revisit and review those plans and hopefully, in some cases, improve those plans.
Thank you. That helps me quite a bit. Councillor Peterson.
Thank you, Worship. I'm interested, when I was reading through the presentation and looking at this, I was thinking back to when I was a very new councillor in 2013, so the onset of the 2014 MDP, and what has impacted our community most profoundly in the last decade since we've undertook that. And I don't know how it fits in terms of the MDP. I can, I can put it in context under the strategic plan, but I was thinking about the things that have impacted us the most and how they would roll out in an MDP in terms of managing crisis primarily. So the things that have impacted us the most, you know, definitely COVID, but, you know, the most recently, water restrictions, threats to infrastructure and cybersecurity. And then if I look beyond our communities to what other communities are facing, you know, stakeholder activism in ways that, you know, if communities aren't prepared to accommodate and deal with those kinds of things, and, you know, the impact or the pushback, I guess, that we're seeing in a very widespread way in Alberta, but also elsewhere around utilities, and how that, how that would impact our operations from a municipal development plan going into the future. But just all those things around managing crisis. And, you know, I have to say that, I don't know, maybe our last, our recent CAO just lucked out, but, you know, it's just going to hit with one thing after another, after another. but you know, he's just going to hit with one thing after another, after another, you know, that are outside the control of the mainstream of, you know, things that we haven't dealt with or maybe he's dealt with before actually because of where he was before. So our good fortune. But yeah, just, I don't, I don't see great capacity for us to, to manage that piece through the MDP. And maybe that's not where it belongs, but it was the one thing that came to mind.
Absolutely. I just jotted down there a couple of things there that you had mentioned. And I think earlier when I mentioned that there are items that are prescriptive under the municipal government act that the town must have in an MDP. The good news with some of the things that you've noted is that there's also some flexibility.
Well, some of them, that our SLT has taken into consideration through the IDP.
So they're very well, and likely is opportunity then to incorporate some of those items into the MDP. So those comments are very much appreciated. Thank you.
I really appreciate the report. Thank you.
Thanks.
One question for you as well, and it's also a compliment as far as what you folks are doing. And that is with the MDP being looked at again now and that it's a living document, one thing that's really hit home for me in the last month is under our strategic item of climate resiliency. And I guess you folks will be looking at a land, looking at future development with a lens of water as well as far as management of water, storm water, and some of the things that we can do to conserve our water as far as new development. So I'm sure that's going to be a part of your, your work. Anything you can, you know, elaborate on that, what you folks will be looking at? I saw some of yours listed here and I was just...
Yeah, in short, Mayor Fuel, I would say we're going to be looking at all of that. It's near top of the list. The slide that I showed earlier touched on natural infrastructure systems, for example. So there is landscaping opportunities where you can explore landscaping treatments that require little irrigation. They're drought resistant. You can have policies in an MDP that require or direct development around that. So that's just one example. Also recently, I think it was Plan Canada, there was an article, or actually the entire, the entire issue focused on that type of thing, natural infrastructure systems and how different municipalities around the country are doing that. So again, in short, absolutely, the MDP review will be looking at policies and policy directions that can help the town with that.
Perfect. Thank you. CAO Scoville?
Just a supplementary comment. So again, as Glenn has been talking about, the MDP is a high-level policy document, right? So council sets policy. So in terms of things like climate resilience, you can set policy on that. And then that drives other things, like, you know, if we're going to increase our rain intensity things, you know, our stormwater retention. Like it's typically a one in 25-year storm, but you know, through policy council sets, that may drive us to change it to one in 100-year stuff like that. So again, council sets the tone with the MDP and then administration changes a lot of their technical documents to meet that intent. There is other things too, like there's provincial legislation, right? Like, you know, we're very keen on stormwater reuse, for example, but to do that, you need to meet the provincial regulations and prepare water quality management plans. So, you know, I would encourage council to set the tone in this plan, so to speak, in the policy. And then we can implement the tactics, so to speak, to achieve that.
Thank you for that. And it's, it's really good timing with us heading, heading towards the fall budget planning. And we've just recently been given a chance to offer some, some items that we would, you know, on our wish list, I guess. And one of the things that I'm going to be probably submitting is, are there things, and I know there's a cost to it as far as the municipality, but what can the town do to support people who want to get rain barrels or want to do some, is it zero-scaping or zeriscaping? Zeri?
Zeriscaping.
Oh, really? I always thought it was zero-scaping. Well, that's good. So I'll be looking at submitting something to do with, maybe there's a way we can incentivize rain barrels or people who want to do some zeriscaping. So it's perfect timing for this and I really appreciate your report tonight. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you very much, Glenn.
Thank you.
We move now to item 5.2, capital project and major initiative priority matrix. Good evening, Riley, and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Worship and Members of Council. This item we're looking at is just on page 37 of your document. The purpose of this item today is just to request any feedback or tweaks that council may recommend regarding the format or weighting of the town's 2025 capital project and major initiative priority matrix. I'm just calling it the matrix from now on because that's a mouthful, but. The format of this matrix was established last year to create an impartial process regarding how we assess and rank proposed capital projects as part of the budget. Leanna had shared with me that within last year's budget deliberation, she had presented council with this format of the matrix where council had provided feedback, adjusted some weightings and wordings, things like that, to kind of arrive at the same product you're looking at right now. We, in administration, found this matrix was very clear and concise because it simplified how we tie our weightings to council's strategic plan and the business plan that we kind of work on. Because of that, administration is not recommending any changes to the form as part of the 2025 budget. But we did want to provide you with the opportunity to tweak it as you see fit. And then just kind of from there, based on that feedback, I'll bring this back, the matrix back to council at next week's meeting kind of for formal adoption. We'll utilize it for prioritizing capital projects to be presented as part of the 2025 budget package. That really concludes my comments and questions. Your Worship, do any members of council have any questions or comments for me or any suggested tweaks to the matrix that you're looking at?
Well, I don't have any tweaks. I was, I'm really impressed with it. I like it. It's, it's pretty easy to follow and I appreciate it a great deal. You know, from, from the past ways we did it in previous terms, this is, this is good. Any questions or comments from councillors at home and abroad? Okay. Thank you very much, Riley. We move now to question and answer period. Are there any questions or answers tonight? Seeing and hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed meeting in camera. Counselor Peterson?
Your Worship, I would move that council go into closed session at 6, what is that, 6:40?
Do we need to mention?
Under, under FOIP Section 24, 1A, advocacy strategy discussion, Strathmore Stampede, council CAO dialogue.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the motion is carried. We are going in camera.